Approximately four o'clock, I'd like to call order the Bay County Board of Commissioners. Madam Clerk, if you take role, please.
Dr. Ancheck?
Here.
Bigick?
Here.
Coonan?
Here.
Herrick?
Here.
Tilly?
Here.
Lutz?
Excuse me.
Chair for you.
Yes.
Six presents.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon thanking you for the guidance and understanding that you have given this Board of Commissioners. Lord, we ask again today for your help and direction to carry on and do the good work that has been placed before you. May your divine providence help them to benefit every citizen in this community. In your holy name we ask this. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to review the minutes from 7:14 and 8:11 or 15. It's your pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Support. Any discussion on the minutes? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are in. Now would be an opportunity for anyone that would like to address the Board of Commissioners under public input. Stand, give us a name and address. Mr. Groya, good afternoon.
Are you speaking to here or what?
Yeah, you're close.
Okay. My name's Chuck Groya, and I live over on Appleton Beach, which, in case you don't know, is pretty close to your illustrious town in there, but it's near the mouth of the river. And I want to update you on a little project I've been working on. And if you're familiar with last winter, I do a lot of ice fishing, and I kind of know where to go and where not to go out in the bay. But it seems we have a continuing problem out in the bay, particularly around the Consumers' Energy Hot Pond area. Last year, I'm sure we all remember the story of a gentleman that passed away in there. And, you know, he's a father, you know, husband. And this is a third fatality that I'm aware of in that particular area. So I kept thinking to myself, you know, somebody needs to do something, and I guess I decided to be the somebody for right now. And I don't know how far I can take this, but what I want to do is try and increase the awareness of the life-threatening, the danger issue in that particular area. So in the meantime, what I've been working on since last winter, I've contacted state agencies, federal agencies, the counties, the cities, the townships, and talked to a variety of people. And particularly Consumers' Energy, because that's, you know, where the problem lies. And everybody agreed that we need to do something, and it's difficult to do a whole lot of things. But one thing we all agreed on, at least some signage that we could put around the community that would warn people about that particular area. We also wanted to look into getting some articles in the Bay City Times, some placards at the local bait shops, a variety of other things. Hopefully, Mike Avery will do a piece on it. I haven't got a hold of him yet. But those are some of the things we're looking at. We met about two weeks ago, several of us, and we talked about the different types of signs that might go up. And pretty much, we're looking at something similar to this. It would be a little bigger than a no parking sign. And we've had some of the attorneys look at it and so forth, you know, because there's always concerns with the legal issues of, you know, well, it's safe here, not safe here for the ice and so forth. Most of the attorneys that have looked at it said there should be a major problem. So we're going to continue on and go ahead. So we had a meeting with Consumers and some of the other areas, and Consumers decided to take care of their property. They'll put some large signs, at least two locations, on their property. And they're going to work with Hampton Township to put some signs on their property where the people, you know, access the bay. Now, other than that, I was hoping Consumers would pay for this whole project, but it appears they're going to pay for the Hampton signs and their own signs, and the rest of us are pretty much on our own. And at this time, we have commitment for at least 10 other signs throughout the county. And I'm thinking we're going to end up needing probably 15 to 20 signs altogether. Like I said, they're a little bigger than a no parking sign. They run about $100 apiece. So I'm in the process of getting those things put together. And of course, like anything else, this all costs money. And in fact, the Consumers wasn't going to chip in for the rest of the signs. We're kind of out here looking for some money. So if anybody's got any suggestions on the best place to get a couple thousand dollars to pay for the rest of these signs and continue on with this project, please let me know. I'd be happy to do that. But I think I got some areas we can look into. So that's the goal, to try and save a life or two. And I know we can't cover every situation, and we can't stop everything from happening, but I want to give it my best shot. And a lot of cooperation from a lot of areas. So I just wanted to update everybody, and thanks for your cooperation. And if you have any other ideas, let me know. I'll be happy to try and do anything I can to avoid another circumstance out there.
Commissioner Herrick.
Thank you. Mr. Groya, do you find that many signs like a lot of the beach, like at the boat launches, is that the idea?
Yes, we're going to have almost every boat launch throughout the community, a couple at the boat launch, at the DNR site, just about any access near the mouth of the river that you can think of. Some of them are going to be lighted. All of them will be reflectors, because some people go out early, some people are late. So that's basically, we're hoping to get some of the yacht clubs and so forth to also put some up.
Unfortunately, I'm an effort. I know, like you said, you ice fish, and I like to ice fish too, and I never go, I don't go, like, you know, east of Chinatown.
Yeah, generally, you don't go between the island and shore, but a lot of people don't realize that.
Yeah.
The more we let them know, the more likely they are to stop somebody from having another problem.
That's good.
Commissioner Bigick.
Social media is usually a good place to start, and it doesn't cost a lot either. I know posting on Facebook, and like you say, Mike Avery, if he could do it on the radio show too, I'm sure it would be helpful.
I'm sure that won't be a problem. I can almost bet on that. Thanks.
Anyone else? Just two cents from me. Franks?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the Commissioners? With that being said, we'll move on to petitions and communications. We have a couple presentations here. Presentation for proclamation for October 15th as a conflict resolution day in Bay County, motion to receive would be in order. So move.
Support.
I'm sorry. Rephrased, it's a motion to adopt.
So move.
Very good.
Support.
Any discussion? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk, if you'd read the resolution.
Resolution 2015-192 by the Bay County Board of Commissioners. Whereas, conflict resolution is a way of people solving individual disputes, as well as the means toward creating a more peaceful community. Whereas, our citizens possess the moral authority and power to resolve conflicts on their own. And whereas, the conflict resolution process empowers all individuals, families, communities, schools, businesses, and organizations to foster communication and devise solutions that are acceptable to the needs and interests of all the parties involved. And whereas, Michigan Public Act 260 of 1988, known as the Community Dispute Resolution Act, authorized the establishment of community dispute resolution program centers throughout the state of Michigan. And whereas, the Michigan Supreme Court Administrative Office provides support to 19 community resolution centers together as the Michigan Community Dispute Resolution Programs Association, which provide trained volunteers, mediators to assist in conflict resolution. Whereas, community-based volunteers and professional partners trained in conflict resolution are the backbones of this program. These trained mediators provide mediation, facilitation, and consolation when acted by their peers or ordered by the court. And whereas, these volunteers and professionals serving as mediators provide low-cost, quality costly litigation, resulting in less time involved to reach a mutually satisfactory solution rather than an order imposed on them by a third party. Whereas, the 3rd Thursday in October is set aside as National Conflict Resolution Day in recognition of the mediation process and to increase public awareness of constructive ways to resolve interpersonal and intergroup conflicts of any type. Therefore, be it resolved, the Bay County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim Thursday, October 15, 2015, as Conflict Resolution Day in Bay County, Michigan, and encourages its citizens to acknowledge the value of conflict resolution through mediation, facilitation, and compilation, and encourage use of this form of dispute resolution, and to get involved and support their local community dispute resolution program centers. Sign, Ernie Krieger, Chair and Ward.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Drancheck, if you'd like to... Judge, come on up.
On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I would like to present you this, a copy of the proclamation for today. And as the county's representative on the Community Corrections Board here in Bay County, I see the other side of it when it doesn't get conflict resoluted. So I mean, this is really a good program and everything else, and I'd like to thank you for all your support and work that you've done in the district. Thank you, Judge. Thank you. Thank you very much for recognizing this day, that special day in the community resolution. I sat in this courtroom for many, many years, and it's nice to come back and say hello to everybody. I miss it, but I'm also doing some things now that I think are important, and that is, besides sitting on assignment where needed, I'm doing mediation and arbitrations. And one of the mediation aspects that I do is my voluntary work with the Community Resolution Centers. That is a not-for-profit organization that provides mediation for people on an affordable basis that can resolve cases rather than having to go through the, experience the time, the money that it costs to litigate. As a judge, when I sat on the bench, I truly appreciated the Community Resolution Center because a lot of the cases that I would have had to spend time in court had gotten resolved through them. And so it's really important, and your recognition of that group is really important today. Currently, the Bay County Friend of the Court Liz Rosatikey uses the Community Resolution Center regularly to help her resolve some of the cases of her constituents. The person that really puts it all together for Community Resolution Center in this area and everywhere from Genesee County, almost north, is Ms. Jane O'Dell. She's the executive director. I wanted to be here with her today when she received this award, because she's the one that really deserves it. And she is the one that helps spread Community Resolution Center throughout this area. Ms. Jane O'Dell.
Thank you very much, and we certainly couldn't do it without volunteers such as Judge Kaprathy. We are serving the underserved. Many people cannot afford an hourly rate. We have many grants that help cover many of our services, but if there is a fee, it's not our best. And what it does, especially in situations where parties are going to have ongoing contact with each other, is that they can work out the problem rather than when they go to court. Usually, there's a winner and a loser, where there's some give and take, but people go away from the table, usually. And it's just as enforceable as if the judge himself had made that decision. So thank you very much. We appreciate you recognizing us.
All right. And thank you again on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and Administration for all you do for our constituents. All right.
Very good. Next, we have the Bay County Drain Commissioner. We're looking at a proposal to apply for a grant. It's the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development. It's an application for grant funds.
So move.
Any discussions? This is to adopt Resolution 2015-193. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We'll move into our last petition, and that's Court Administrator, Extension of the U.S. Department of Justice Grant, requesting authorization for Resolution 2015-194 for adoption.
So move.
Support. Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to petition, I'm sorry. We're into reports, resolutions of committee. We're into Ways and Means with Commissioner Coonan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From the Ways and Means Committee, we have Resolution 2015-195. This is an agreement for police services, a liaison officer between the Bay City Public Schools and Bay County Sheriff's Department. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner, Tilly.
I want to point out that there was a lot of discussion about this position at the last school board meeting, and it was pretty intense. So coming back next year, it might be a different agreement. Because the schools are essentially putting the entire bill for a sheriff's officer for the entire year, and we're not in school the entire year. And so what happens in those other three months of service? And what is the officer doing at times? So they have some questions on that. But at this point, they approved it going forward at this point in time, but just an FYI.
Thank you. That was a question that I had, is what is the cost and who's bearing the cost? So making it clear that it's done by the school district is...
For now.
For now, very, very well. Anyone else? With that being said, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-196. This is the use of the golf course property for the duration of the Bay Medical Care Facility project. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-197. Escavation of the Peace Capsule. This is from the Historical Society. I move this resolution.
Support.
Any discussion? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-198. This is Modification 1 to the Restatement of Interlocal Agreement Establishing Saginaw County, Bay County, Midland County Job Training Partnership Act. This is a consortium to include Grashit and Isabella Counties. I move this resolution.
Support.
Any discussions? Commissioner Bigick? Ed Obersky is here.
He is here.
Got a question.
If there's any updates since we last met.
Things happen so fast, it's hard to say what happened since we last met and didn't meet. The, I have it on good authority that both Grashit and Isabella will approve this same modification on September 15th. The Saginaw Committee, similar to Wayne's and Me's, Ways and Means, approved it, so that I'm confident that their board will approve it on September 15th also. And meeting with a Midland County Commissioner, he says there's at least four votes in favor in Midland County also. So I believe it's on track to be approved by all five counties.
Very good. Anyone else? Thanks, Ed. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-199. Terms of Richard Byrne and Patrick Beeson on the Tri-City Area Joint Airport Zoning Board. Move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-200. Grant funding for the Boardwalk Project at the Bay City State Recreation Area. This is through Environmental Affairs. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Bigick.
I had the opportunity to go to the beach on Sunday with my grandchildren, and it was crowded. There were a lot of people there, and the beach was in good condition. It's still a long walk, so I think this will make it a lot easier for people to access the beach, which we get from the spray park area.
Yep. The only thing in question, Laura, I think you're, yep, you're here. The only thing in question is, are we going to be able to clean that extra 650 feet of shoreline, or do we have to wait for the DNR to do it? And my answer, of course, is, I'll wait about an hour, and then we'll go clean it. But Laura, maybe you can shed some light on it.
It would be, yes, they would, they want to do it initially, the first time, to ensure that the boundaries are set and clearly defined. And then after that, they're actually welcoming participation from the county as well as friends of state park. And it will be grooming the area that's sandy, the non-vegetated. We wouldn't necessarily be expanding, like placing new sand, but it would be cleaning what's there.
Very good. Anyone else? With that being said, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Laura, for everything on that.
2015-201. Fiscal year 2015, 2016. It's a comprehensive planning, budgeting, and contracting agreement through the Health Department. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2000, excuse me, 2015-202. This is the aerial spraying for 2016, 2017 through mosquito control. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-203. Bangor Township Communications Tower Project through 911 Dispatch. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-204. Community Center furnaces, two of them, through buildings and grounds. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-205. Inline gas valve at the Riverside Center through buildings and grounds. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-206. Pin Cunningham Park, purchase of a 4x4 ATV through buildings and grounds. I move this resolution.
Support.
Any discussion? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-207. Golf course maintenance, it's a barn roof through buildings and grounds. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-208. A number of payables, general fund, and housing. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-209. Pause in the park event for animal control. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? With none, all those favored signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that's all the business from Ways and Means.
Thank you, Commissioner Coonan. I'll come into Commissioner Tilly with the absence of Mike Lutz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From Personnel and Human Services, we have Resolution 2015-210. A process for filing, fulfilling the 911 dispatcher vacancies. I so move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-211. Vacancies and Division on Aging, Sheriff's Department, and Finance Department. I so move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes business from Personnel and Human Services. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Tilly. We'll keep you on the spot with the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 2015-212. Reports to the County Executive. I so move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-213. The 4029 tax rate request from equalization. I move this resolution.
I move, support.
Discussion? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-214. Workforce Development Board appointments. I so move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes business from the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Tilly. We'll move into reports of county officials, department. Mr. Hickner, do you have anything to add? Nothing? Very good. So we'll move from you over into unfinished business, which I believe we have none. We'll move into new business, which we're fine. Miscellaneous, Commissioner Herrick.
Yes, I wonder if we could hear from our 911 director on the Bay Alerts and the status update. I just, because I had some people asking me when they might be able to get back online and, you know, what's going to happen, you know? I know we talked about you going to the phones, how they're going to get a message. Just kind of, can you update the public on where we're at with that?
Yeah, Chris Zworski, 911 Director. Update, I'm moving to a new service provider named Rave, as you all know. We have a meeting tomorrow, I believe, to discuss the kickoff program. Hope to go live in October. For those who have the existing Bay Alert account, what we're going to do, we've saved all the phone numbers into a database. We're going to enter those into the new Rave database, and we're going to push out messages to each individual stating that you're now included into the Rave database and need to go to this website to update your information. So we're looking for the mid-late October push-out, rollout of the system, and then we'll have everyone's, we've got everyone's information captured. We're going to store it in the Rave database and push it out to those individuals asking them to update.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Very good. Thanks, Chris. Commissioner Bigick.
Just point out, WIDM, if you go to their, if you do their app, you get some warnings from them. It's not specific for Bay County, but there's a tornado warning out of Oakmont County right now. So if you use the TV5 app, you'll get their warnings sent too.
Is that a paid public announcement?
Yeah. I don't work from...
Very good. Anyone else under miscellaneous? If not, Kristen, maybe you could just do a little update. There's been a lot of activity at the community center on the gym.
There has, there's been a lot of activity. Our contractor has been in for the gym floor. We have, they started on the 1st of September, and they have laid all the plywood down, and they've drilled through the plywood, through the maple, and then into the cement and they've drilled through the plywood, through the maple, and then into the cement underneath. And our maple gets delivered on Thursday, and they want it to sit over the weekend so it gets accustomed to the air at the community center. And then they're going to start laying the maple, so they will be done by October 1st.
Wow, that's exciting.
Our meeting starts October 4th, so they're on a very certain schedule.
Commissioner Herrick.
I just got to say, and I was, I've been at the community center twice already, and it's, it's not, it looks completely different already. It's just amazing. It's going to be great. And I mean, everybody, I'm not, obviously, I'm not a basketball player, you know, I'm a little, just a couple of balls, like too short, but I mean, anybody who plays basketball that has played there is going to love this place, and the people are going to love using it, because this is going to be really nice, you know? They've done a great job.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else under miscellaneous? I do have an announcement, and Deb, if you'd maybe indulge a little bit on Paws in the Park.
Paws in the Park. We're excited about this event, Saturday at the Fairgrounds. There'll be over 20 animal rescues there, nonprofits, veterinarians. We have the Michigan State Police K-9 Unit. It sounds, it's going to be a fun day for families, a pet photographer, so it will be enjoyable.
Yeah, I think they're going to have a petting zoo.
Pet. Petting zoo, I, you know, there are more activities than I know.
Yep.
But it's going to be a fun day from 11:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m.
Yep.
And we are going to have some coverage, some media coverage, and it'll just be, it's the first one, and they anticipate drawing crowds of approximately 5,000 people.
Wow.
So we're excited about it, happy to be a part of it, and look forward to everybody stopping up there.
Sounds good. Thank you. There are some appointments. In October, we have a Lang Bank Authority. It's a one-at-large representative. It's a three-year term. We also have the Department of Health and Human Services Board of Directors. It's a one-three-year term. In November, Building Authority, they're two six-year terms. And in December, we have Division on Aging Advisory Committee, which is four two-year terms. So those are things that are coming up for the rest of the year. And I believe we're looking at a closed session, are we not, Amber?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we've requested that the Board go into closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268 subsection E, to consult with its attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation.
Very good, a motion to go into closed session. All those in favor, or do we need a roll call? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tilly?
Yes.
Nonstop, Mr. Dranchek?
Yes.
Begic?
Yes.
Herrick?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes. Thank you very much.
No motion necessary.
Very good. Um, let me know. All right. At this point, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Support.
All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned, thank you.